The Senate will be in the words.
Father God in heaven, we just thank you for your holiness and thank you for this new year. We thank you for your son and God, I just pray your guidance and that your will be done here in this city. And that you guide these people that are running our city and bless them and help them and show them the way for Concordia to improve and to prosper in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
We'll do approve the agenda.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. Request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, limit your comments to ten minutes. Moving on to our discussion agenda, the Everbridge Mass Notification System.
Mayor Commissioners James Billiger, county emergency management director is here to kind of visit us about a new mass notification system that they're rolling out and that we would like to be a part of, so to make sure that you're well informed and give you an opportunity to ask some questions.
So, Pow County is part of the North Central Regional Homeland Security Council. And at that council, we took on the project of mass notification and mass alerts for the 12 county region because many of the counties in our region did not have an alert system to notify their residents. So, early in late 2021, early 2022, the Homeland Security Council contracted with Everbridge to provide their services. So, Everbridge is a mass notification system that uses phone, text, and email to send out alerts to residents of the county. One of the good things about Everbridge is that it allows for the sender of the message to respond to the receiver of the message to respond and send them. So, if I send you a message, you have the ability to respond to that question. Some of the things that Everbridge can do, it's used to warn people potential hazards. It can also be used to warn people of any dangers, hazards, severe weather. The good thing about Everbridge is the severe weather alerts come directly from the National Weather Service. So that a spotter does not happen to be out texting a tornado warning. All those severe weather alerts come from the National Weather Service if you sign up for them. So, you only get barrage of a ton of different alerts that you're not that you haven't signed up for, like they have tsunami alerts and stuff like that. So, you go in and you decide what alerts you would be alerting for. One thing that I think we're going to do as a mandatory alert is a tornado warning. So, if you sign up for alerts, we can mandate that tornado warning goes everywhere. It's also used just for general information. If you want to let people know offices are closed, certain roads are closed, late starts, water main breaks, those types of things. One of the other good things about Everbridge is that you can go in and pinpoint a street and you can say, these residents, I want to notify that the water mains broke. And so, only these residents will get it, not the whole community will get it. It can also help with incident tracking. So, if there's an incident, you can know where things are happening all the time. So, that's another good, I think, feature of Everbridge is that we'll be able to track what's going on where there's a major incident. And then lastly, employee communication, as you see on the slide, Sheila was notifying the county employees that she was giving them options of open enrollment. So, they can reply back and say, hey, this time this didn't work for me. That's another great benefit that I think of Everbridge. And then the funding. Again, it's funded by the North Central Regional Homeland Security Council. Also, those projects are managed by the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission. And the funds for this project have been earmarked for long-term sustainability. So, it's not like any year the funds are going to dry up. I mean, unless Homeland Security funds from the federal government dry out. We should have Everbridge long-term. So, tonight, why we're here tonight is Sheila and I have been trying to let the cities in our county know that it's an option, it's a tool out there for you guys if you want to use it. We can say, you can administer, administrate your own program, build your own groups, send out your own messages, all those types of things. And then although the contacts are going to be imported from the Textcastor system, we are going to also encourage people to go in and sign up and create their own account. That way, they can get signed up for the things that they want to get signed up. Everyone that is coming over from the Textcastor system are in the same groups that they were previously in. If they want to change anything or sign up for new alerts or groups, you'll have to go in and create an account. Any questions for anyone?
So, if they, if you're doing your tornado warning locally, are we going to get ones for all five counties?
No, the thing with Everbridge is it'll pinpoint your county and just say that it's your county. And even, it can even do things if there's no threat applied and the threat is in Concordia, I may not get it or something. One of the great points about it is it really kind of locates where people are at. When you go in, you sign up and you give your address if you want. And so, it can locate where you're at and doesn't bother you with a lot of alerts given that much.
And it's an opt-in system.
Yep.
County used it and have you had any issues?
We've been using it for, we've been training probably for six or eight months and been using it just to test out on county employees and like the emergency planning committee. We've had issues and we've had to talk to Everbridge about mostly just administrative issues. When we bought this, when the council bought the system, they also bought data. So, county phone numbers that they purchased. And so, a lot of those numbers are old and undeliverable. So, we've kind of found out through a long process that we had a lot of undeliverable phone numbers. So, we're trying to clean up the database and get those numbers that are no longer available to not just kind of go the whole space.
I think the biggest issue we had is when we sent a call out to everybody that was in the system and then we got about 100 calls back. I just missed a call from you.
Yeah.
Don't do that during the day, do that after 5:00.
Because we need, it progresses if your first contact is your cell phone or a text, it'll go through that. If you don't, if you want someone to reply, they don't reply, then it'll go to the next phone and then it'll go to the email. So, it kind of progresses until someone replies. But you don't have to ask for someone to reply. It's only if you're wanting to get information back from people.
Does it show Pow County when it comes through? Like the school shows up some weird out-of-state number now?
On the text that comes through as like 8911 with the short little number.
Okay.
The phone call comes through, you can change it. So, our said Pow County and then it was our office phone number that was associated with it. I thought you changed that on the screen when you're getting ready to send the message. No, don't give me use. I'm really surprised how many people called back and said it was the whole call.
I think it was one of the numbers that automatically moved over from Textcastor and I have been getting the texts and the phone calls. So, it functions just like the school messenger. When you sign up for that, can you opt out of the phone call and just get the text messages then?
Yeah, you can, whatever, yeah, whatever primary you want to be contacted in. Just put in your phone number or just your email.
You choose what options you want to be part of. It seems like this has enhanced features. It would save us a little bit of money what we're paying for Textcastor a year. $1,000 a year. So, not a whole lot of savings, but a little bit of savings. And it's the same system that other communities are using countywide now. So, it kind of makes sense for us to get on board.
It'll just enhance it. It also lets you use a lot more characters to send your message out.
Is there any reason not to?
Haven't seen one yet. I got to visit with Sheila and James after the last LIPC meeting. And everything seemed very, very good. So, I think you heard a little bit about LIPC and then Sheila's graciously offered some training assistance for us as well, which would be helpful for administering.
The big key factor would be the more characters. Because we've had lockdowns and stuff, we've had to be very short. And I know it's upset people in communication because we couldn't get much information, but we could only do 100 characters. So, I think this is going to enhance those times quite a bit.
So, the cost would be through the same program?
Yeah, it's no cost to the cities and, I mean, the county. It's, it's, it costs from each of the counties to the Homeland Security, 6,500 a year or so. But that's paid for through the Homeland Security Grant. So, I mean, so there's not going to be any cost to to use it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to our action agenda, the minutes of the December 21st, 2022 meeting.
I'm in the 23 minutes of the December 21st, 2022 meeting.
The only clarification I might have is that there wasn't a specific number of votes entered for Toby Nasker on the election results. Is that purposeful? There was none for Toby?
It was Toby. I spelled it the way Sheila gave it to me.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number 24. Questions or concerns?
I'm going to approve appropriate ordinance number 24.
The move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number 24. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation. I'm sorry, moving on to resolution 2023-2147, set a date for a public hearing.
Mayor Commissioners, this has to do with rural housing incentive districts. So, we need to pass this resolution to set a date for a public hearing. It's listed at 5:30 PM for February 15th. And during this hearing is that we will go over in detail the redevelopment plan for the proposed subdivision up at the hospital. And we would also go through the feasibility study in detail so you can see exactly where the numbers are. We do have some updates to do to those numbers based on what we found with the assessed valuation that we can use is at zero. And I think that we have an assumption of some base level valuation since I think our numbers actually look a lot better during that public hearing when we get that updated. As part of the resolution, you had five exhibits in that resolution and we just got the last of those early this week. And so, I printed out some copies for you at your desk and emailed that to you earlier. The first exhibit that was in there is the legal description. The second exhibit is a map showing the parcels that matches the legal description. Exhibit C talks about the assessed valuation. And it gives the owner of property, Pow County Health Center Inc., still does own the property right now. And that was intentional. They will own it until the building is demolished and then we'll transfer ownership over to the Concordia Land Bank. So, at the time that this public hearing will be held, Pow County will still own it. This also sets the existing assessed valuation of the district at $0. Right near Pow County Health Center is a private nonprofit. So, they do not pay any property taxes. So, that's why the assessed valuation is at zero, which that's actually helpful for us because then we can capture that entire increment of buildings. So, that would be great. Exhibit D, the fourth exhibit, talks about what the proposed facilities project will be. And it lists the construction of 12 moderate income houses and four high-income houses. This is a slight difference from what was on the M.I.H. grant. We applied for that grant. We applied for 11 moderate income homes and four high-income homes. And in between that time, we found that we could actually fit 12 on that property. And the lot sizes would still be great. The houses would still work very well. And it actually ends up working better for the rural housing incentive district for the feasibility study. So, we are shifting that to 12 houses, 12 moderate income houses and four high-income homes. The public facilities that the rural housing incentive district is intended to fund is the completion of Sunbar Road, associated public sidewalks, installation of public water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer utilities to serve those new homes within that redevelopment area. So, that's specifically what the RHI is for. That's specifically what the public hearing will be about. Not about the number of homes, not about the size of homes, not about the aesthetic of the homes, but about the public infrastructure to serve those homes. Exhibit E is a summary of contractual assurances and competence feasibility analysis. Because of the way that we set up our development group through PowCorp with the Community Resources Committee, it's kind of a grassroots effort. We don't have contractual assurances with a certain developer at this point. So, PowCorp is listed as the developer. Our contract and all of our folks from that Community Resources Committee are the ones that are working on it. The cities heavily involved because we had to apply for the M.I.H. grant and we have to set up the RHI. And so, we're more of a grassroots teamwork collaboration effort. But feasibility study that's described here, this is what we have talked about before in generalities in that we would need to, it should generate about 1.9 million in incremental taxes over a 25-year period. And so, when you bond that out with the updates to interest rates, and we did find that from our August estimate to December, prices in design, construction, and bonding costs have gone up a total of about 12%. And so, that's what makes our numbers not look as good or as pretty as what they did in August. But it should fund everything except about $312,000. And so, during that public hearing, when we look at this in detail, that's when we'll have to ask you if you want to decide that the city investing $312,000 of that large money is worth this project going forward or if we want to do some things to try to cut that down. So, we're more detailed during the public hearing. So, for the purpose of the resolution tonight, it's to set the date of the public hearing at 5:30 PM on Wednesday, February 15th. And we'll go over these items in detail, but the resolution has to include these exhibits so we know what public hearing is about. Are there any questions?
No, I move to approve resolution 2023-2147.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve resolution 2023-2147, setting the date for public hearing to establish the rural housing incentive district development plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I know that management support, correct?
Just saying, on subject of housing, we have been in contact with the Kansas Rural Housing Commission. And our next step with the moderate income housing grant is to meet with them so they can go over the detailed rules of the game with administration of that grant. So, we'll find out if it's a reimbursement-only grant, how we can distribute the funds, what steps they want to see happen first so that we can draw down those kind of things. And then we'll be able to get back together with our Community Resources Committee and finish mapping out those details. In the meantime, we continue to target properties and identify ownership of the info lots. And so, then after we have this meeting with KHRC, then we'll have direction on being able to go forward with acquiring those properties because we had set aside a portion of those grant funds to acquire those properties. That makes sense. So, in the meantime, Caitlin Johnson continues to work on plating and infrastructure design for the subdivision area. Some exciting news on the floodplain front. We were able to get a draft RFP prepared over the Christmas holiday. Bruno and I took a look at it and felt pretty good about it. We still want to ask a few consultants that are a little more familiar with it than we are to make sure that we're not missing some pieces. And then we will put it out for, to solicit consultants to prepare that application for us. And those consultants will use existing data. The city's already invested an enormous amount of effort in gathering a lot of floodplain data. So, this consultant will be hired to assemble that data into the form for FEMA into the application. And FEMA requires people with certain credentials to be able to apply for that form. So, that's why we have to go through these processes. So, hopefully, we'll have some good news on that front. And then we expect that we would have those proposals back in the middle of February and then you would take action on that in March and then we can proceed with that project. Chris Atkins couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to share that the Turf Project is nearing completion at Doian Field. They're putting up the railing this week and the project closeout meeting will be held on Friday. I've been answering the questions.
Staff reports.
I was just going to share that the Crossway Runway project is like 95% done. They're done with all the grading. They're just going to come back and do the seeding and spray. Just for some information, Valvoline MS is having some staffing issues. We've been helping cover for a little while. There's some conversations going on. We'll be back with you guys probably at some point to discuss what may or may not need to happen to assist them in different ways. If you hear some talk or anything, there are some discussions we're running out, assisting them in any way we can to help and cover, keep their people safe.
Mayor Commissioners, I guess I want to introduce Brent Gary to our new chief of police and he'll begin on January 16th is when his official first day would start. So, Brent, you want to say anything? You're introducing yourself.
I'm just excited to be a part of the team.
Any other staff comments? Commissioner Collins?
I want to know what's happening on Cedar Street, the guy that was going to build the retaining wall. I know he's moved all the stuff out of there.
That became a nuisance because he had something happen to his foot and he had to have surgery and he was in six months in rehabilitation. So, that stuff's up there and he had a guy come in and kind of scoop it off his fur and pile it back up. But then it became a nuisance and his permit went and all in void. So, through some pressure, he got some people in there and moved all that material up on the deal. So, it's, but that side wall's in pretty bad shape. But he planned on getting that done. He spent thousands on material and he just hurt himself. So, and he has a retaining wall coming down the alley. I don't know if you noticed that. It's looked really nice that we worked with him on. And that's mostly done, but that's where it's at right now, just kind of in the middle. Hopefully, we'll get that done again. We'll see, but we need to get that side wall fixed.
Yeah.
I love it in Archer. What's the hole in the ground? Yeah. What's going on?
I throw into that thing.
Yeah, I know.
That was a main break though, a few days ago. It was right underneath the storm drain.
Yeah.
So, we had to rip his storm drain out and fix the main. And now he's putting the storm drain back in.
And we're in the process of building like a grade box. So, we're not going to go back over the main. Go back, work a little better, fix it under the roof.
Yeah, they had, they had poured the bottom of the box and encased the main in a box. So, it doesn't matter. And we had one up the, up the street too.
On Archer or on 11?
On 11th and Hill, right past Hill Street. That was actually on Christmas Day. So, yeah. Keep it here.
Thank you. I move to adjourn to a study session to discuss commissioner orientation and priorities.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson and second by Commissioner Beldon to adjourn to a study session. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Excuse me, we are adjourned.
All right. I will talk faster.
Imagine that.
Sorry.
I appreciate the brother.
All right. I hope you're all able to locate your orientation manuals. Maybe we have a brand new orientation manual for you there. We've put together an agenda that should be at the beginning of your manuals that can talk about the topics that we'll be going through tonight. These reference books have a lot of the basics of governance. We didn't go through too much last year because we had the same conditions. So, I thought it'd be time we go through and refresh everything. I want to talk to you a little bit about expectations as a city representative. And Eric, can you go ahead and put that flight graphic up there? So, you were all elected here to represent the citizens of Concordia. We really appreciate your service and your guidance to us as staff as we work through our daily operations. This graphic is one that was put together by the League of Municipalities a couple of years ago and I find it pretty helpful. So, it shows along the bottom, the green and blue lines, if you put the staff in the, in the green bar is the commissioners of the councils' roles and responsibilities. And then the staff's roles and responsibilities are in the blue. So, we're looking to you to provide us with purpose, with vision, to kind of help guide us through those, to work through strategic goals and help prioritize some action items. You provide some planning and oversight through your budget actions and through honestly, just kind of holding us accountable, asking the questions like what you do here today. So, we really appreciate that. As we work, get down lower into the nuts and bolts of things, that's where staff tends to take over. So, then that's where we make sure that the projects get done. We're working closely with our vendors on a daily basis to make sure that they're getting things done and just the day-to-day operations. So, anybody that comes in to pay a water bill or anybody that needs an ambulance service or the guys out there on a Christmas day preparing a main break, those are things that we'll take. And you shouldn't have to step in to handle those things. You should be able to rely on the staff to handle those things. So, this just kind of puts, puts kind of a capsule around the work that we're doing here. We also want to make sure that we're functioning as solid representatives of the community. They're trusting that you're going to manage their money. It's good stewards of their money and make good policy decisions that are good for the good of the whole and not just a certain select few. We do make a lot of decisions with a broad range of topics and all very, very important work. And just really, we appreciate the work that you do. So, we've got, I think Stacy and Amber and Justin are going to help me out going through some of these topics. The department heads are also going to give a little bit of overview of what the departments are, what their goals are and kind of what their product is. So, there's an org chart in your notebook here and we did make some adjustments this year. If you recall, that Ron left at the end of 2021 as public work structure and he had streets and airport and storm sewer and park all rolled over one. With his departure, his retirement, that gave us an opportunity to pull some of those pieces out. So, you'll notice in your org chart, it's either within the section on governance or maybe back under miscellaneous and we did put one of those two places. We did pull parks and pulled Park Swimming Pool out and put that under Chris Atkins. So, we created a Parks and Recreation Department instead of just wellness and recreation. And then fully retained streets and storm sewer as well as airport operations. And then we also modified where the Broadway Plaza was because it's technically a contracted service for us as well as city attorney services, economic development, and our city engineering services. So, those are some adjustments that were made from last year. So, we're rolling into some department summaries. So, Jeremy, we'll start with you if you want to give a little overview of your department.
Well, I'm the, do you want me to?
Yes.
I'm the show's director. Take care of the wastewater treatment plant and water distribution system, collection system, wastewater. I have eight guys. I have the water department, pretty, pretty out of the plant. And that's basically it. Right now, one of the things that is the wastewater treatment plant is getting ready to be completed. It's got 30 days left on the contract. So, hopefully, we can get that knocked out. But right now wastewater bio solids handling is installed. That's what makes the dirt that we can just give away. The concrete paving is getting wrapped up. The electrical here is being installed and the switchovers. The electrical here is being installed and the switchovers are scheduled. The new generator will be set within the next couple of days. We have a temporary generator right now. Uh, the new influence will be brought online. One of them is being used. So there's three inflow pumps that are. That handle all that. So. It's exciting. Hopefully. We make contract in date. We're getting close. It, the place is a disaster. I was out here today. And when it's all done and all cleaned up, I'd like you guys to come out and look at it. So. It'll be. It'll be neat to see. It'll be interesting to see what kind of dirt that makes and how it's usable and and stuff like that. And we, I already talked about it's main break season, so. That's. I talked to. Russell one day and and uh. He was asking me questions and people think that our main breaks are caused by freezing of the water and it's not. It's just by heaving in the ground and. Our old pipes are encased in that frozen ground and it just breaks. We'll be working on that probably for the next two months, just randomly.
We do appreciate your. That.
This last one, this last one, I actually got the chest waiters on and. Jumped in the hole and fixed the mains. So I like to do that once in a while.
I like that you like to do that.
I'm glad somebody likes to do that.
All right, thank you.
Brenna, you up to next?
In my department is planning and zoning and code enforcement. And. I'm guard planning design and uh, building code, plan review. Including site plans, zoning regulations, do inspections for code compliance. Have to be able to interpretate and the codes and the zoning regs. As well as subdivisionary and all that. Also, uh, I'm the chairperson for the board of building trades. And they're an advisory board for the uh, construction trades, the board of zoning appeals and the planning commission. I'm certified being a floodplain manager. I'm certified in several building inspection categories. Electrical, plumbing, mechanical, structural, residential, commercial, all that. Work with other departments constantly on site plan, making sure when we get building uh, proposals that they meet our requirements and the other departments are satisfied. Sometimes that can get tricky. Most of the eastern vice president, hard America chapter, international code council, which is statewide building association and building officials and building inspectors. As well as permanent technicians. Uh, new projects in uh. In twenty-two, I'm kinda proud of, I don't know if you guys remember, but we just built a nice big hospital. That was a big challenge from start to finish. A lot of information to. Work through almost on a daily basis on that deal. We got a. A new little drive-through coffee shop, little new business there, some business expansion geysler roof and built a new. Big storage building. We got Republican Valley Landscapes doing an expansion of a little bit of our office. We've got the state facility out there doing a major expansion. We've got some new projects coming through distribution where I'm I'm in the north development. We've got some site plan approvals for nineteen oh nine Lincoln where the old boy alley was for car washing and maybe charging station. Uh, cloud county tech condition. Uh, we just approved the preliminary, preliminary final flat for that. Uh, and uh, we'll be looking at site plans and and building permit plans here pretty quick, I think, on that. What else? Oh, Prairie Land putting in parking on Cunningham has done a lot of expansion of their communications as well as others. Uh. Yeah, cellular AT&T is doing expansions. In twenty-two, we also, I issued. A record. Not a real crowd right here, but twenty-six demo permits and we demo thirty-one wide structures. We did demo one that maybe could have been considered light, but that was in uh, the old taco guns for the news. Demolition. We also got some, a couple coming up under demo program and I've got uh. The old where, the old uh, grain elevator down here, the corrugated tin grain elevator that's real tall. A person has purchased that and they intend to come in this spring and get a demo permit to take that building down. The owner of that who did it himself. Uh, goals for next year, get those floodplain mats right. That's one of my main goal. We have to do the comprehensive planning update. That's supposed to be done every ten years. I think our last one was done in two thousand and eleven. Uh, I'd like to get more online involvement, get all that stuff updated where people can do more stuff online in my department. It gets a lot easier for me when I get emailed, stuff emailed to me. Uh, and then constantly updating the zoning regs. And right now we're going through the board of building trades that been meeting after two months for the last year and a half. We're going through the two thousand and eighteen uh, building related code packages. And we're just through the residential code. Actually, we've got a meeting next Tuesday night to finish that up and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be recommending. Uh, new code package, updated code package with. I think I've covered one.
I am floor banks and the public works director. Um, my basic function of my job is the street maintenance and the storm sewer system as well as the airport operations. Had a couple of struggles this past year, uh, finding and obtaining help and then the cost of projects skyrocketing. Uh, accomplishments, I would say. Uh, finishing the runway project with the lights and all that and yet have the. Extension of the runway and then we started the crosswind runway project and it's pretty much done now. We just wait for spring. Our goals for next year, there's a couple of streets that I wanna do on ex silk coats on, which if you've seen Republican. Going to the south of the high school. It's been silcoated and it kinda protects the road from oxidation and all that. But that's on my list as well as domestic sealing, which is kinda is better. A better seal in for uh, the roads like potholes versus like cold mix. Um. Another goal I have is to possibly look into Villanova relay of Archer from twelve to eighteen. I know in the past, I think we did from six to I think twelve. Correct. So that's another thing I have on my list and then try to knock out as many curb getter and sidewalk projects possible. Thank you.
Mayor Boston, chief of fire and EMS department is where I'll start off, I guess. Use PD dispatch and animal control too. I'll make it under the list. So the fire department and EMS, uh. It's been a year for us. We had a maximum number we've ever done. We did a thousand forty-four calls. And I put back to when I worked as a captain here, we ran three to four hundred calls a year. So we are increased completely. Some great successes we've had. We've had three EMT classes and completed two AEMT classes. So we're trying to train people up to help us with going into our weaknesses. Our biggest strength that we have over there is our full-time staff and the reserves. We have the dedication that they have. They make my job so easy. It's not funny. So I can't. Everything goes to them that gets done over there. The weaknesses we do have is getting our transfers out of here. Uh, we could have more calls, but it's getting that staffing. We're already so busy doing everything else. Getting those people down the road and we feel that's real important for us. Somebody local goes somewhere and wanna be able to take them and then get to that next facility, but people they know from their hometown. And the other big issue that we have is the cost of supplies and cost of medical supplies is going up every day and we're just trying to keep up with that. Some other big successes we had on the fire side, we did some fire training. We've got everyone over there now that's completed an in-house firefighter one and two course. And we are currently doing all of our inspections we need to. So that allowed us to keep our eyes on reading out through. So when we get the ladder truck and stuff, I'm hoping we can get that down to it too. So we're on track with where we thought we should be. The PD side of things, um, one of the best things, the thing's been going on, we've really pushed a lot of traffic enforcement since I took over. And we was trying to hit the school area and some of that stuff. And maybe the people don't see it as a success, but I see it as trying to keep our kids safe. And we had some officers that stepped up to the plate and did that really good. We started a lot of in-house training, trying to get people up to date on a lot of stuff and trying to do what we could in-house. Our biggest weakness over there right now is we're at half staff over there. So I'm glad Brent's coming on so he can take on that challenge and work through that issue. Um, our dispatch over there is a great group of people. Um, that were short, couple dispatchers there. We just, I think I can go ahead and announce it. Um, but Kat, Kathy Knutson, who used to be a dispatcher here, accepted today and she's coming back as our dispatch supervisor. So that will be nice. Uh, and she has a lot of wealth and knowledge, so that will help us out. Um, some of the big strengths over at the police department is we, with Amy's help, did a complete base lift of the front office area. And I think the parents and the building looks a lot better. I know the staff appreciates that greatly.
I'll interject on that. We're not quite done on the exterior. We ran out of good weather days, so Joey Collins will be back in the spring to paint the back half of the building and we're still waiting on guys to finish up the trim piece outside and wild side on this exterior signage.
I was in dispatch today and the tenant windows cuts down that glare and stuff. So it's a great help over there. It's been muted for some time. And the other department we kind of oversee right now is the animal control. We have a great animal control officer shares about those animals. The biggest weakness we have out there is that shelter is way too small. Um, I know that's a problem because it's in the blimp. But that's might is that we're working on some of this, how to help that. Lot of information real quick.
What kinds of inputs and um, calls?
It has gradually just been coming up and and increasing and we see this nationwide right now. And the way the healthcare works, um, people are just getting sick more and they're using the animals as more instead of trying to do home remedies and stay at home. They're going to medical facilities. And once they get to that medical facility, they don't have the surgeons and everything else that's more localized. So we're getting a lot more transfers out. Our fire calls when back when I, as I put it, when I worked as a captain. Um, you know, we land a lot more fires. We did EMS and now we run a few fires and we run EMS. So that's why we have so many EMS classes going on.
Brenna, good ass.
Um, I manage the administrative office, um, have three employees. We do payroll, utility billing, court. Accounts payable, customer service and nuisances among other things. Um, I am the human resources officer, so I assist with hiring, firing. I do the the benefits. Um, deal with all the benefits companies, do the paperwork, uh, new hire paperwork, prepare for meetings. Um. I like to say that I take care of Concordia's history. Um, because somebody needs to do it and I think it falls on me. Um, I am the housing authority. Board rep or the city rep for the housing authority and. Um, Midwest Public Risk is our insurance liability and property pool and I'm on the board of directors on that. Um, I don't really have projects like the other people do, but been working with our current company to get a new website, a whole new look and probably been working with them since June. And I was notified this week that they have migrated our info, um, but we still have a ways to go. And I had one major project this year, which was the carpet, but y'all took that away from me to root the brown grand, but I'll get over it. And that's it. Um, you're far, huh? And I'm the finance director. I don't have any employees. It's just. And I um, do the final review of like the count payable and payroll that happens out front. And I also do accounts receivable. Um, I track all the project expenses. I do monthly bank reconciliations. And monthly financials, which are online. If you wanna go look at them. Um, I also do quarterly financials. Which I thought you lost one. Um, I guess I'm kinda mixing my two, the next thing too, but um. I'll give you a copy of that and then there'll be a fourth quarter one that comes at the end of this month. Along with the full yearly financials. Um, then I do quarterly semi-yearly and yearly reporting on taxes, grants, etc. Due to the audit, um, and the budget. And then I guess project wise, my. Name project that we just finished, well, just I guess it was a year ago now, but was migrating our system completely to a new. Program encode is what it's called and still a year later, we're figuring things out, but it's mostly good now. So. I mean, I like it a lot now. It's just there's still things that every day is amazing. Like, oh, we can do that or we're doing that, but. We're figuring that out and that's, I don't have any other projects coming up, but.
In summary, I guess our, our A department heads really do provide a lot of work, a lot of breadth of expertise. And so some things that we could use your help on is if you see something in one of their areas that does need addressed, feel free to call us or contact us and we can work to take care of it. Or give you an update if we already know about it and see where it's at, but um. Happy to have you ask any questions of us. Um, keep involved as much as possible and keep communication flowing.
Yeah, a question that I had um, earlier that'd be helpful. So let's say that that I have a concern about a water issue. Would you prefer me to contact Jeremy directly or contact you, that you can go so with Jeremy?
Because of the way that we're structured to be better, if you would contact me, if I'm unavailable, you can always call the front desk and visit with them. Yeah, because of the way that we're structured. So I I service as your only employee and then I supervise these guys directly and then they supervise everybody else. That'd be the the most appropriate way to go.
Okay. So like I was saying, the quarterly financial, this was third quarter, but it basically doesn't change as far as our breakdown of revenues. Um, we. Our main revenue sources are taxes, which is about twenty percent, sales tax, which is about forty percent. And franchise fees are about thirteen percent. And then we also get um. The ammo department, although it doesn't cover. And then uh. Yes. I'll move on to. Audit. So the audit is done around March or April of every year. And before that, I prepare the yearly financial, which you will all see before the audit and. Those usually don't change after the audit. They uh. It takes two days and I will give you a copy. Everybody else already has one. We have lots of extras. And then we also have the budget book that I'm going to provide you, um, that we go through in the summer every year. So in July, usually mid-July, maybe earlier this year. We'll do the budget and I kinda just, you can look through this after you get it. It's exactly what they had at the time that we did it, but. The budget calendar, I put in there exactly what we did last year as far as um. Meeting dates and. Yeah, when we published, we had our final public hearing and everything like that. Um, also just a quick. Budget at a glance that just says how many, we have fifty-seven point two five mil levy rate, total assessed valuation of thirty-one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand. That kind of information somehow. But. That was quick, but is there any questions on any of that? You get all of this, you can ask some questions anytime to after you. We'll get over.
Do you wanna go ahead and pass that over to C I P a little bit here too? So. They'll recall back to last July, we went in detail of a detailed review of our capital throughput program. They'll recall back to last July, we went in detail of a detailed review of our capital improvement program list, we won't go over in detail on on those items right now. Um, but you offered us to proceed with everything that was above the line, we had funding allocated, even left over from twenty-two or into twenty-three and we had a lot of grants and other funding sources. And we've really made a lot of progress in in those areas, we did have to shift some things around as Stacy mentioned to be able to. We roofed the brown grand and and hopefully that will start, hopefully materials will, or sooner than later, we'll keep going with that. But what's neat about this capital improvement program and the way that we operate is that Stacy's app really does look ahead a long way, so it's. We had about five years on paper, but all of these guys are actually looking, we had about ten years in their offices. So they're really putting things down, seeing what it's going to take to get here and there will always be more projects than what there is funds to go around, I think Ron and all has said, if you had a million dollars a year just to focus on streets, we might get caught up eventually. But, um, but that's not the case, so hey, we're helping out, we generally are able to put in about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund into C I P every year. So any other funding sources that you see in there, you can take a look at that, they're going to be from other sources to help us out, so we rely heavily on other state and federal programs to get things done, what we need to get done. Any question on capital program? All right, next step is travel policy, occasionally commissioners will be doing some traveling and we do want to have you involved, especially with the programs that we hit municipalities puts on, local government days coming up. Um, so we do have some parameters that we do ask you to follow when Stacy's going to go.
Um, most of this that would contain to you would be overnight travel and in that case. Which I guess it doesn't matter because you don't have city purchasing cards, so never mind, but. Um, we do have maximum allowable meal reimbursement, which is ten dollars for breakfast, sixteen for lunch, twenty-five for dinner. This is section seventeen of the handbook and that's on our website as well. And we just asked that whenever you have any receipts, you bring them to us for reimbursement and we kind of do have to have receipts in order to do that. When it comes to hotels, more than likely we'll make the reservations here and pay for it here if at all possible, sometimes they don't allow us to do that. But we'll send a sales tax certificate with you and then we try to always get that taken off of the reservation. Mileage, you'll be reimbursed for mileage according to the IRS. I think it's sixty-three and a half cents, I don't know, it might have changed since then. And so you would just let us know how many miles you drove to a function and then we'd reimburse for that. And everything that this falls under is everything like the employees do, so the commission falls under the same thing. That's kind of it in a nutshell. If anything else that's notable, those are the main things you're going to be reimbursed for is mileage and meals. And as I said, most of the time we'll try to make reservations if they'll allow us to do it.
Typically when we do travel, we do try to limit the number that go, we take a maximum of two for certain things and part of that has to do with coma, making sure that we're not violating that and then other just to help control our budget a little bit. All right, Stacy, you're next on commission procedures.
Struggled with this because I just do it and I don't think about it. You had said to talk about quorum. I did look that up, most of times core, a quorum is a majority. We need a quorum to call a meeting to order, for us a quorum is four. And that's through charter organs number twenty-six and that's how we can do that differently than the simple majorities because we charter out of that. When we went from three commissioners to five in two thousand and two, very early tried to explain this to me once and I'm not sure of the reason for it, but. I think that they wanted, you know, back then you can have two people could vote on something and approve it and. I think the thought was you need more than just a simple majority to to not approve, but to call things to order. Another time you'll need, um, the fourth is vote would be for charter ordinances and some other ordinances like. Things that bond council might bring to us, sometimes those take a fourth fifth approval for that instead of a simple majority. And we record all the meetings we have since two thousand and nine. And we now offer them on Zoom and you can zoom in for a meeting, but we definitely prefer people are here. And if you are going to do it that way, you know, it's good if Amy or I know, if you're not going to be here, it's good that we know, everybody's always been good about that. And I do the packet, put it out on Friday, a lot of times things will update and I'll update that on Monday or Tuesday. If something comes up later, things will be laying here like Amy did. And. And I prepare the motions so that there's no question about how things should be worded. Um, we've had some issues with that in the past, so obviously here the mayor does everything as far as calling for a vote and that kind of thing. If someone, somebody abstains, then. That vote will go towards the prevailing side, um, for example, Ashley is abstained on things to do with the hospital and. So maybe if we are going to have Republican Valley do something, then you'll want to abstain in that case. Executive sessions, um, you have to call them for a specific topic and you can't talk about anything else in there but that topic. And obviously no minutes are taken, um, you have to state certain things before you can go in and, um. I make that with the motion. When you do that, the public, we give them three minutes to speak, a lot of times they want to come and talk. They want to be added on to the agenda because they want to complain about something and I always tell them, no, they can come during public comments. Generally, they don't speak during a meeting unless you ask questions of them.
It's just a reminder with the, with the proliferation of the use of audio visual equipment, we also want to remind and we're working with our boards too to remind them to. If you're here in the room in person, our door is always open and it has to stay open even if it gets loud out in the hallway and that's because it isn't open meetings, it's kind of be accessible to the public. And so when you're in here with the use of AV equipment, our cameras up there on the wall, so it's really important that you stay visible to the public that's on Zoom. That wants to participate pretty easy the way that our meeting is set up, some groups get very large and they tend to choose spots, kind of like you're choosing a church, you choose to sit at the back. We want everybody in the front row that's on, that's on the board. Um, if you choose to participate via Zoom, we want to recognize there's about a one or two second delay sometimes and so that's primarily for the mayor to make sure that you wait for all the eyes before you call for the nays. And then if you're participating via Zoom, make sure your camera is on all the time, again, um, anybody participating here, they probably expects to see your face the whole time. And it's good if you can leave your microphone on all the time, if you're in an area where it's a little bit noisy, it's good to go ahead and mute unless you're voting or unless you're speaking, just so that background noise doesn't come through. But just general, general etiquette there, um, decorum during meetings, I mean, I I think you guys all really do a good job in our commission since I've been here, been been through really good, I thought, I think. Um, of making sure that we're. Talk what you're crazy, words matter, I guess, and how that, how you say what you say, we work really hard to, um, maintain good professional working relationships with a lot of folks and so. As you're in here representing the citizens, you want to represent them well in your words and in your actions. Um, everybody else knows you as a, as a city commissioner, so it's really important to, uh, conduct yourself with with the forum when you're out in the, about in the public as well, so we appreciate your service and. And want to continue to have you be as proud of us as we are of you too. Any questions?
During public comments, we used to not. Answer.
Oh, answer.
You know, if they, they get a complaint.
Technically not supposed to.
Okay, I I thought that was.
Basically, the answer should always be, well, we'll take that into account, we'll look at.
And then what I'll have on that is we'll, we'll be furiously taking notes over here and be able to get in touch with the person afterward, prove that through some, some solutions and. If there were ones that we need to discuss further before we get back with them, they'll bring that to you as well. I guess just that, um, we need you here for meetings too, have you know, the part of the court first and third Wednesday at five thirty, really need you here as much as possible, Stacy mentioned, we've got to have four for a quorum, which means we can't conduct any business unless at least four of you are here. Appreciate you being here. Anything else Stacy? Okay, Justin, you've got our coma refresher and conflict of interest genetics.
All right. I didn't bring my PowerPoint that I had done in years past, it was numerous pages in little fonts, so you're fine. Most important thing to know is Cora, which is the Kansas Open Records Act, it's not necessarily going to be anything you have to worry about. If for some reason you would get a open records or less, you have to just send it to the city, get it to Stacy. To Amy, um, what you're going to have to concern yourself with is the Open Meetings Act and they take it rather serious in Kansas and there's a lot of things that people kind of inadvertently. Run afoul of it. Most importantly is not so much, I'm not concerned and generally it's not an issue of you guys meeting outside of here, essentially having a meeting. I don't, we don't generally have that as an issue, the issue you're going to run into is, is you're going to be approached by people in the community that want to talk to you about something. I always suggest you listen to them and say, okay, invite them to a meeting. Never say, I'm going to take care of this for you, this is what we're planning to do, because what that does is give the appearance that the decision's already been made. And that decision has been made, you know, not in an open meeting. So be very careful with that. Technically, you know, if if I walk into the coffee shop and there's four of you sitting down having lunch. Technically, in the state of Kansas, that is considered a meeting and is now coma violation. Uh, so be very careful about that. But like I said, generally what your issue is going to be is running into somebody in the public who's going to say, hey, this is what's going on, I want you to fix that. In years past, we've had some, oh, yeah, yeah, we're going to get that taken care of for you, please don't do that, just say. We will, you know, take that, thank you for talking to me, I will, I will take that into account and let folks know, please come to a meeting, uh, in an open, sorry, you know, the, uh, guest comments. And let us know what's going on so everybody is aware. Uh, so just be very careful not to commit yourself to anything or say, yep, we're going to take care of that and and by God, this is how we're going to do it. Because that is simply a violation. That's the most important thing, there's some other ins and outs when it comes to going into executive sessions that we'll take care of. Certain things we can and can't do, but. Most of that, like I said, the most important thing is just be careful out in the community. When it comes to conflicts of interest, actually Stacy kind of covered a a lot about it, if you have some kind of an interest and when I, when I say interest, not, hey, that's. I I didn't know what's going on with that, more so if you have a financial or or you have a direct relative that has some kind of a financial stake in this. Uh, or you sit perhaps on one of those boards and that could be something that, uh, could be in conflict or you are just say, hey, I sit on this board. Don't think this is a good idea for me to, go ahead and abstain from that vote. Now, I have learned during the process of the wind farms is that in Kansas, it's pretty narrowly tailored what a conflict of interest actually is defined as. I'm going to leave that up to your discretion, so, you know, if you have a, if your spouse or child. Has some kind of an interest in this as well, that's going to be a conflict of interest, okay, so. Prime example, maybe if if you know, we're doing something like, you're going to need to abstain from that if we're doing landscaping. Outside of that, I will leave that up to your discretion, but if, let's say you have a cousin or something, that's not technically a conflict of interest in the state of Kansas. But I always tell people to err on the side of caution, if you feel like it's something that looks better if you don't do it, also take into account the public perception, so. If you feel, hey, this is something that doesn't look that great, I'm going to go ahead and abstain, just go ahead and do that, if you have a question, just ask us and we can talk about it, I've. Done that before where it's like, hey, what do you think of this? Yeah, go ahead and do it or don't do it. Also, just kind of, and we kind of talked about it too, general decorum and stuff like that, be very careful what you say in a meeting. Off the cuff or after the meeting is over because technically if the meeting's over and you guys decide to pow-wow after that, everybody together. But we've now done another open meetings violation. Um, also be careful too, and I've seen this on numerous occasions because most of our court is now remote. Um, not here municipal court, but, uh, the district court is remote, um, always be careful what you say, because that microphone picks that stuff up real quick. Uh, we've had some very interesting situations, uh, where people have said things they didn't know we could hear, uh, they thought they were muted or whatever it may be, sitting in here, this picks it up. Quickly as well. So with that being said, you know, if you guys have questions, I'm pretty easy to get ahold of. Uh, if you call here and need something or email me, whatever, uh, if you have a question, just let me know, it's what I'm here for as well, so. I think that recovers it, I do believe, so.
And I just, just a, I saw a recent, it was like a year ago case where on Facebook, like I'm one of those. Community Facebook pages, there was more than two, there was more than the majority that commented on there and it was an open meetings.
It is, um, I, and I will do this with every client I ever have, I generally suggest. Uh, if it's a Facebook situation, leave it alone. We have seen that happen in our community and some other places, um, I have, I, you know, there have been some times where I've seen folks respond. And it's a very professional response, somebody has completely misinterpreted something or something needs clarified and we leave it alone. But just remember, most of those folks that are responding to that stuff are waiting for you so they can fight with you. So I tell folks just be very careful with what you say because really, nine point nine out of ten times, it makes matters worse. Or there's more misinterpretation of what Facebook's placed and then you do run that risk of. If I'm on the commission and and Marcia pipes up about something that somebody said, um, and then Regina hops on and Ashley. And then Amy and everybody's sitting on there making comments and stuff like that, then yes, we do potentially have a meetings violation, so. A lot of the times I've even typed responses before and then had to delete them real quick, so, uh, before I hit send, I always take a minute, a deep breath before I hit send, so. I would just be aware of that as well.
We have questions for Justin? Well, we've got Justin part-time, we have to share him with the public county's district attorney, we have to share him with the college as well and so he doesn't have an office here, doesn't have set hours, but he's usually very responsive, if you need to get ahold of them.
I'll take him office and you won't get him. Place to hide and down.
All right, we're going to transition into setting priorities, I know through a really quick overview, you guys each have one of these orientation notebooks, would encourage you to take a few minutes to refresh yourself with what's, what's happening in each one of those, there's a lot of good information, a lot from the lead of Kansas municipalities, they also have a very good website with a lot of resources as well. So go ahead and take a look at those, um, review your budget book a little bit as we get started this year, we'll do our best as we bring things to you to reference back to C I P list, the reference back to what's been allocated in budget to help, help remind you. We recognize that we have, we immerse ourselves in this stuff every single day and we get to see you guys twice a month for a couple of hours, um, having to help, help remind you on anything that's changing. Okay, so transition into priorities now, um, back in two thousand and eighteen and kudos to Ashley for bringing this up, um, back then. When she was working with Fod Corp was we need to establish some community wide priorities and things that we're all really going to focus on in an effort to collaborate and help to to bolster our community, so we did that and you can see what those priorities were in two thousand and eighteen. You can see that we get to cross number one off the list, we've been able to accomplish that, so that's been been great. Um, we changed priorities a little bit, uh, in two thousand and nineteen as we drilled down to what does the city want to see, where do we want to focus our time, energy, talents and efforts and money. And we kept those priorities for a couple of years and then we refined those again back in two thousand and twenty-one and they remained the same in two thousand and twenty-two, we just elevated housing to the top, so our priorities for the last couple of years. Have been housing, facilitating growth from within, addressing light and maintaining infrastructure, so tonight we're to invite you guys to discuss them on yourselves. Um, bounce ideas off to us, ask questions, uh, would love to set the priorities for this coming year so that we can, we can focus our attention where it needs to be. Because I'd really like to make sure that housing remains a number one as, 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 as long as we have that project going. Uh, just to make sure that we, we finish that out strong and that, um, you know, we concentrate our. Resources to that, um, and then also, you know, maintenance of infrastructure is going to be critically important as. Reasonable stated with all of the increase in costs, we can't keep pushing projects off because it's just going to get more costly, so those two are going to be really important for me.
I would agree with that, I think in part of our conversation or part of my comments, two weeks ago, I really kind of feel like light is is a part. I think it's part of housing, it's part of, uh, not so much the infrastructure, but I think it's really. We're going to be investing this much effort into our housing in Concordia, how do we work to address the issues that bring down the existing house and certainly, uh, the demo program, I know that, I know that. Bringing that many houses down can can seem like a difficult thing, but I think it it makes our community safer. And more aesthetically pleasing. So I I I know that. It's hard to be. The police nuisance police. But I feel like. We, we've had a lot of issues in our community of people not taking care of their own things. Um, it, it seems like that we, we have. Maybe. We've had a lot of, uh, people moving into our community from out of city out of state, which I think there's some advantage there. Um, I think there's also some challenges. With, you know, wanting to make sure that we're maintaining a standard of living that makes us proud to live and grow in Concordia. Um, so I'd like to have that. Continue to be a priority. And. No, I don't. Like. Being the person that has to hold somebody accountable, but I'm also not okay with people not being held accountable with. Letting things get out of hand. Um, this is a pretty nice community and I'd like to try to keep it nice. So I don't know how we, how we can achieve that outcome. But I'd certainly like to work towards it. And I've asked this before, I don't, I don't really know how we achieve it. We certainly have major thoroughfares in our community. Sixth Street, Eleventh Street, Republican, Eighteenth Archer. You know, to carry significantly greater amount of traffic than others. And so I'm thinking about the streets that people will travel as they come to town for ballgames or other sorts of events. In a way to prioritize those primary areas. Um, not that other areas aren't as important, but really wanna make sure that we're, we're dialing in on those areas where people are gonna be most likely to see. Our community and do whatever we can to. Present well. Uh, for the community that that we are, um. And reflect the work and the investment that the city and other partners have been making in this community.
Actually, I think our housing needs to definitely stay the number one priority. It's because we need it. If we're gonna grow within. You know, we, we need those housing tickets. And I know, um. Nikki is at Cobb Corp is working on childcare, but we can't. Bring employee, I think we need to help her follow through if she needs it. With making sure that the childcare. Is a priority as well. Um. We can't bring people to town, we can't grow our community without the housing, without the childcare. And that seems to be a shortage as well.
I think housing. Too, is one of our. Should be top priority. I. I wish there was a way that we could. Make sure that our people that own property. I don't know how to put it without being mean, but if they own rental property, they need to make sure it's. Livable. In a decent manner. And I don't know how you do that. How you make people be accountable for their. Rents.
Yeah, that's a conservative thought.
It makes a big difference when you. Drive through some of the areas at town where you know there's rounds. Makes you shake their head. And I don't know about you, but I sometimes drive. Just up and down the streets to see where things are and what's. Empty. Lot of houses that are used for storage.
Which is, yeah, something I think that housing study really helped us out is to identify those properties of file utilities of the properties that. That need some extra TLC or some extra attention. I think we. Hopefully we can do a better job when we address some light here this year.
You know, I had a. Uh, was in a session with a farmer rancher one time and, and, uh. He, he added on to an expression, um, talking about sometimes difficulty with folks and. I think I'd use the expression, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And, uh, he said, you know, that's true, but you can sure work to make him thirsty. And, and I, I, I've really taken that, um, and kind of found different ways to apply that. Different ways. So, so we may not be able to make or enforce. Some of these. Changes as we talked about kind of at our last meeting, but I wonder what we might be able to do that would. Encourage. Or basically make them thirsty. Uh, we can't make them drink, but maybe we can, maybe we can make them thirsty. Different ways that we can do that, whether that's frequent visits, some people who are concerned, those get tired of the visits. But. I, I know that there are limits to what we can do to actually. Make things happen, but there are things we can do to encourage it. Be interesting to know what those options might be.
As far as like economic development goes, I would like us to have our goal to be a growth multiplier. And so with that, the. You know, dedicating support, of course, for economic development. Resources when necessary, much like we are doing with that street project right now. And then also, uh, limiting regulation that's harmful for businesses, which we. Yeah, they're really engaged in, which is great, but just to continue to make sure that that's. Being a growth multiplier, not just we wanna.
Okay, so I've got written down, housing. Has a lot of votes to be number one. I guess in any difficulty that you want to add. I don't know. I, I think for me. It's not a. I think like the health of our community is important, but from a governmental aspect, that's really hard to address. You know. I mean, even hearing how many more ambulance calls there were than prior years and, um, like just the limited access to. You know, there's, there is a new hospital, so like that's already a huge. I guess improvement as far as like resources availability, but. Resources available, um, for, just for people's general health in our community. There's a lot of factors that band to that, so it's just. I mean, to narrow it down. Um, specifically, but. Uh, because there's a lot of aspects of health.
Just thinking, so probably making sure that we're still prioritizing our. Parks and Recreation Wellness Programming too, and not just letting that slide as we're focusing on housing, for example, would that be one way to meet that goal for you to?
Essentially, yeah.
What are some other things that you can be helpful with that? Cause I, I agree. And when we talked about, so part of the history of changing. The recreation and making it wellness and recreation was kind of an idea of, of. That ultimately the healthier our community is, the more vibrant it's gonna be, but also the. I mean, there, there's a cost savings associated with the healthier communities. I mean, not, not that that's the primary purpose, but. Um, so there was kind of a shift to make sure there wasn't just. Recreation programs for youth, tried to expand it to address more adult oriented or including adult oriented. Uh, recreational activities. Uh, the walking trail was part of that bonus. So what, what do you think would be some?
Well, I think, I mean. All, all of those aspects, like. Because it is unhealthiness, it's expensive, it's expensive for individuals and the community. And, I mean, not necessarily in our community, but like suicide has skyrocketed, um, socialization has moved, um. Have way towards social media versus actual interaction, um, for there to be more opportunities for social interaction amongst all age groups. For there to be. An example, like if, um, if, if. You guys wanted to go play basketball, that's cold outside, where do you go? Or, um. You know, and. Uh, an indoor track or what, what do you as an individual in the community have access to? To be able to, besides like a gym membership, be like to do anything recreational that you don't have to be a part of a team and sign up to be a part of a team to do. Would, you know, I'm just, I don't have a specific idea of what that is going to look like, but just overall help walking trails, bike trails. I'm just like exploring in general, not saying like specific to our community that we need. Any one of these things, but in general, just like, um, having some focus on health or, um, even. You know, when other organizations within the community are. You know, or economic development, like if somebody comes in and they have a great idea for something that's gonna promote the health of our community, just support those things.
So we've got, um. List here, housing, because. A lot of, a lot of support there. Maintaining infrastructure, addressing light, continuing to support economic development efforts. So we talked about, and I think Ashley used the word growth multiplier. Regina, you mentioned childcare. I know that's a heavy focus too, so just kind of supporting those efforts. And then help with the health of the community. So how do we wanna form those? And there's no limited number of what we can do, but are, do you wanna? Say those are our five or do you want to refine those in any way?
Open to sticking noses like. Oh, it's underneath big broad, you know, just the. What's the plural emphasis? Emphasize? Interesting, weird.
Emphasies?
Toby emphasis.
What is it Toby?
He doesn't even know how to spell his own.
What's, what's the plural?
I, I agree.
It's emphasis. Numerous things that I need to emphasize.
I think emphasis is the verb emphasis though.
Like, how many emphasis? No, we want a plural emphasis. Sorry, rabbit hole, what's?
Okay, so we had, this, this past year, we had a, a broad category of facilitating growth from within. So if we're looking at broad categories, we could keep that category. And stick the growth multiplier and the health of the community under that facilitating growth from within, at least from what I, what I heard you say, the examples of things that you guys gave. It all points toward that quality of life, having it here to be able to attract people that want to be here and stay here. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Quality of life, I like that letter even then, it's all necessarily, cause they kind of go hand in hand.
I think the, um, what Amy's pointing to, I think the, I've heard good things about the library. The new director is getting a lot of people in the younger group, um, the middle school age and the elderly just in their, um, for. Different kinds of, of reading groups or. Whatever type things. I think they're kind of working on that as well. Um, I've, I've heard really good things about the new director getting a lot of different people involved with the library again. And, um, hopefully our calls will go down with the new facility. I've heard. Several people say that they still go into Solana, they're using the walk-in clinic now or whatever. So maybe. Those two things will help with that.
Improve the fiscal health of the community, improve the physical health of the community. Physical health and well-being. Are you looking for category titles?
Looking for, for the broad category, we can stick bullet points underneath that kind of like that idea of the subcategories. And I think if, if you're talking about quality of life, then too, then that could encompass the physical, mental, emotional. Like keep going back to that facilitating growth from within and may, maybe I'm fixing that and maintaining infrastructure too, but one of the things that. We talked about at department head meeting was, again, recruitment, retention of employees. And with our people, we don't have any services. And so somehow, I mean, if I'm picturing bullet points, I'd like to make sure that that's underneath the bullet point. Maybe that's under maintenance infrastructure. That's number one infrastructure.
When the quality of life in your community is enhanced, then it. You know, as far as being a place where people wanna come, work and live. And this as well.
Kind of all about the health. I, I, I know not a purpose, but, um, but we talk about all of this stuff and the first thing when you mentioned health and then I'm like, well. Doing this and doing this and that, like, that all kind of falls under the health of your community, maintaining the infrastructure. The lean from within, all that stuff really is the health of your community and your folks.
Actually, I, I'm aware of a, a lady who recently walking down Sixth Street tripped in a pothole and hurt herself significantly. She might have to have surgery. When you talk about infrastructure and health, that all is, it's really.
So what?
Well, but infrastructure too, like that's part of the conversation about any kind of potential. Community center, community activity center, I mean, that, that has infrastructure components to it. Supports the health and well-being of our community. Their questions or, you know, how, potential collaborations with that, so that.
If we use the phrase, um, support. Support the health and vitality of our community. Does that hit all those categories and does that hit eco-devo too?
Sure. I mean, that's part of it. Part of our, part of our financial well-being that is gonna contribute to a, a vital community. If we don't, if we're not financially successful, then it's not gonna be a very vital community. Not physically. Probably not gonna be a vital community, I mean, that all fits into it.
Okay, so do we want to? We've got housing. Maintaining infrastructure, addressing light, how do we want to phrase? This other category doesn't need to be one or two and what's our? What's our umbrella?
Just probably, um. Probably a new question, maybe. I mean, I, I, and I'm not trying to be, uh, flippant about that. I think. Whatever, whatever way. Best helps. You organize that, I think, I, I'm okay with it. I think that you, you appreciate and understand where we're coming from. So I guess to be a bit, I don't care what you call it. Let's just make it a priority. But I don't, I don't know if that. I don't wanna rob you of that guidance either.
Do you want me to play with? Some category titles and some bullet points and bring it back to you at the next meeting and see if that captures what we discussed tonight?
Actually, housing. Could have bullet points under of addressing blind, new. Construction or infill, they could. All be under housing. Wouldn't necessarily have to be another. It's a category, yeah.
So. Taking care of what we have and building more.
Right.
Any other thoughts? About, really good goals.
I think it would be helpful if we had, cause we were gonna have to adjust some C I P. I think it would be helpful if we knew what those maybe were before we, I mean, we can have priorities. Like the community center, that's a great priority, but we're already having to push Stacy's carpet, you know, yeah. We don't wanna push it another couple of years. I mean, uh, I mean, realistically, we can support. I'm sorry, Chuck, I'm just gonna throw you under the bus, but a community gym, but. How many projects are we gonna push down the line? Streets, fill in potholes, whatever to help with this community gym. I mean.
A hundred percent. We, we've just pushed back our C I P so much.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, and, and I'm not, I mean, the community gym is a, is a great idea. I just don't know if it needs to be on one of.
And, and I don't know that, that, the, the priorities here, these should be your abstract thought ideas that you can use just as, as guiding principles. So then. Let's say that you have these priorities and let's say that you put quality of life or health, but maybe vitality on there, then. Um, let's say we think back of the conversation, the community activity center. I can say, yes, we can stick that on the agenda. It aligns with this priority. So let's come, come forward and have a discussion. So we can, we can bring that forward to talk about that. So let's come, come forward and have a discussion, so we can, we can bring that forward to talk about that and our support. For that, if we choose to proceed with that, it, it could be financial, it could be an in-kind labor material, it could be. Just supporting programming and making sure the space is used and helping you promote programming, so support for something doesn't necessarily means putting cash toward it.
And I think that that's, these bullet points, then any, anything that's brought. Before us, well, we'll consider anything that's brought before us, but that, it's just, if somebody were to bring that up or recognizing that there is a, a need for. Addressing viable, that does fit under this category, so I wasn't necessarily advocating for placing this somewhere, but that's where would fit within that conversation. As we talk about it, it, it aligns with these goals and subjects, it's kind of like when we, we talked about the modern medical facility. You know, we, we didn't really spend much money towards that, but knowing that that was a priority for the community, it shaped that conversation about what land do we have? Is there land that we have that could be beneficial?
It made easier to say yes to the recommendation was because it was a priority.
I think when you, when you discuss health too, just narrowing that to a community gym is not, that there's a lot more to health and quality of life than just that one aspect. Like when you brought up the library or having childcare, like all of that kind of ties into a healthy lifestyle or quality of life. Not just, you know, I mean, and I think back to the community out there before we moved here, our library was a tremendous resource and. To be really honest, moving to a community that had a, the library those, had such lacking resources was. A difficult transition, I guess, as far as like what we utilized ours before, so what was available here, was it quite a change? So just, I mean, some of those, those things, there's a lot that's encompassed within health beyond just a, a gym.
So we can set these priorities now and that'll help us like going into budget time and then that would, would be when we talk about the CIP again to say what needs to come about the line versus what needs to be below. What do we have the resources for now and what are the resources we use to stretch those local dollars further toward it? Then just making sure that we are using these guiding principles, then as we, as we put our dollars towards something too. So, but if it doesn't align with any category here, then maybe it's not worth our time and energy or maybe we need to revisit our priorities. Just get the conversation going and think about it. All right, so do you want me to take a stab at the overarching categories and then bring this back to you guys with some simple listening options? Thank you very much, appreciate it.